That would be that at most. That a CD would yield roughly that, so it'd have a neutral until the early payoff of five years. It will take at least a year to get to something going, so, you know, we're really looking like a four-year payoff.
Yeah, I got a question. I've got everything on here. I'm looking for the payment amount. I know I've seen it somewhere, but where is that? The actual...
Well, there's three different scenarios. We go 10, 15, and 20, and it's less the annual debt service amount. For instance, in the...
Just to give me, what do I pay? What am I paying for 10? What am I paying for 15? What am I paying for 20? What am I writing a check out for?
Under 10, you're looking at $476,459.
That's my payment. 476, 346, and then 281.
That's correct.
That's the question we talked about earlier.
Sorry, social studies, not a matter of fact. But I can figure out what's higher and what's lower. I can at least figure that out. All right, thanks.
I've got a question, just as you wanted to put property taxes as the backup to this. Is there anything else available or that could be used as a backup besides property taxes or instead of?
No question. Brad Bingham, Barnes &amp; Thornburg, we're serving as bond counsel. So it's a great question. I do want to take this time to clarify what Oscar said, which is these bonds will be payable from revenues of the district, and if those were short, from a property tax of the district. These are not obligations of the county per se, and there's no, this is not a county backup of the district's deal. So I think you ought to understand that, because it goes to your question, which is, is there something else? The answer is no, because the solid waste management district has revenues, and it has the ability to levy taxes, and that's really it. So there's not, you know, there's no other resources, you know, there's no recourse to the county, no lit revenues, none of that would be possible here. It's just revenues of the district in the tax levy if needed.
And the tax levy, that's what I was getting at there. It's nothing else available.
Exactly.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any motions?
A motion to be made, ready.
About a resolution.
Yes, a motion to pass a resolution.
Before we do that also, for the motion, resolution, so we're with the resolution, we're giving permission to do what, who's going to make the decision of, it's in a 10-year, 15, or 20 year.
That's exactly, that's where I was kind of going with that.
It says up to 20 years, so...
Yeah, so we're giving the motions, giving the solid waste management district permission to do whatever they feel is best.
If I could jump in here again, so that's a great, great question. So you're right, this resolution would give broad authorization for the district to go execute something within these terms, and not exceed 20 years, not exceed 4 million, interest rate not to exceed 6%. Timing wise, they've adopted their bond resolution back in, if you have the June meeting, June 15th, I believe it was. And they had this discussion, what term do they want to look at? I think at the July 17th meeting is when the district board will kind of make a final decision in terms of what they, you know, want to look at. I think, I think the thinking is to look at the longer-term amortization, so 20-year, to keep payments lower, and then again, if it's successful, you got a five-year call option, so you can start using cash to pay it down or...
Pay it off.
Yep.
Smart.
I didn't mean to call you out, Oscar, but you were shaking your head no. So I'm gonna call you out anyway. See, I don't feel dizzy. Come on up, come on back up there. Let's see.
That's a nice jacket you got on.
I was simply saying that there was a lot of discussion around the 10 years, so we've been focusing on the 10, but the 20 would be the most flexible from a cash flow and safety, because then you'd have the most cash available to foresee anything, but 10 years would be the quickest way to get it off the books. So there was a lot of discussion, so I, you know, again, the best route would be to have it open, but if there's a recommendation from this body, the president of the board is here, I'm sure he would take that into consideration. If there's one way that this body leans, he would weigh on that.
The older I get, the more I realize how important it is to be flexible.
Well, and that's exactly why I asked the question about paying off early, because if you could take out the longer term, and just to be safe, right, you're safe making that payment, but then you can pay it off sooner if you do bring in more money, and it's just a safer option, so.
That's our recommendation, but there was a lot of emphasis on the shorter, just get it off the books quickly, so I was like, ah.
Well, I can tell you right now, if this thing isn't, if we don't get some kind of understanding, this will be 20 years, I'm not backing it. So that's one vote out if we don't grow for 20 years, so.
So that's where I was gonna get up here and say the solid waste management district is happy to take the blessings of the council. You know, I think we have the ability to pay it off fast, that's the bottom line, and whatever you guys say is good, we'll pass that along to the rest of the board. I'm only one vote in the room, I always say that, but I think, I think, I know that board well enough to, for women to take that advice from the council.
You know, I personally don't like the 20-year option, because in 20 years, the equipment's obsolete, you're gonna have to do it all again. There's no...
30, wasn't it? It was 30.
It's still obsolete in 20 years.
Hopefully, 30. But there's no time to...
Now, Ted, I don't expect it to take 20 years to pay it off, that's the thing.
If this takes 20 years after the numbers we've heard out here, then somebody's either, you know, they're standing on top of my shoulder and doing something down my back and calling it rain.
But for the taxpayer, for the taxpayer as far as the low payment and not having to increase their property tax revenue coming in, you take the longer option, but you pay it off early.
Well, we shouldn't have to, it says we won't have to increase the property taxes.
Well...
No, we won't, I mean, we shouldn't, I mean, and I'll just, I just wanted to kind of put this out for the general public. As long as things go, and granted, I know that I've kind of had some little disagreements at times, because initially this was, everything was gonna take care of itself when this all rolled out, and there was gonna be little unicorns, I was gonna find them behind the corners of the building and stuff, but the unicorns have been a little harder to find. So I think this is going to allow us to find those unicorns, but if the, you know, unicorns are harder to get, at least if we've got the 20-year, we've got that flexibility, plus that allows us to be able to say, hey, if we need to make some adjustments in solid waste budget, then we can tweak things a little bit, but if we're looking at a $476,000 payment, I've gotta, I've gotta destroy your budget before I, so I don't have to touch property taxes, and I don't want to do that. So I would rather give us the wiggle room, so then I don't have to worry about, you know, wrecking your budget when you come back up in a couple of years, to keep everybody else from going, why in the hell did you raise, you know, you raised my property taxes because you sold me this thing that, you know, didn't turn out to be a golden unicorn.
Sir, may I just...
Come forward.
So if I may, and then I'm gonna ask...
My recommendation to my board members would be, I prefer the longer option myself. We can save the money, we can put it in CDs, we get past the five, maybe six-year mark, make sure we got the cash on hand, we pay it down, we get it all away.
Because I think if we don't, if we're not able to do that within that timeframe, then this, then this is not going where we wanted it to go.
I understand, sir.
So, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure everybody has a little bit of perspective on what I call a nuclear bomb. If a nuclear bomb drops on Warwick County and property taxes do end up having to pay for this, what does that look like? If you look at your, I'm gonna use your example of 20 years, and that very fine print at the bottom there tells you that 50%, or I'm sorry, 50 cents per month would be the expected property tax on Homestead with an assessed value of $200,000 in a worst-case scenario. So do that math, and that tells you, tells you what that looks like.
One comment that I've been very pleased, because I was on the solid waste board for many years. I've watched over the years, each month, each meeting, there's a printout, and I get that sent to me still, and the revenue has increased every year by quite a bit. So the revenue is growing, revenue's cited, and this will make it grow a whole bunch more. Yeah, I think that we'll be able to do something probably in five years.
Not to oversell, but I feel this is important, and I can give you guys the presentation I gave to the solid waste district. The solid waste district has actually lowered their taxes since 2019 consistently, and they're at the lowest tax rate to date, because they have increased their revenues, they've been able to reduce the property taxes they're imposing on taxpayers. So to that point, it has had a positive effect on taxpayers as well.
Thanks. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I think we kind of get nervous, we talk about computers and robotics and all that, but as I'm sitting here is me doing what I've been in living, just like taking 40-foot of beans into a combine. Okay, you adjust your speeds, you adjust your air, if your grain's getting dirty, you adjust your shives, you adjust this, and within six hours, you have a combine, you're shelling good beans, corn. And it's pretty well similar, because of the adjustments, your greasing points and all, there's not as much to it, it's probably more, I'm gonna guess with electronics and technology, you're gonna have to do more updates on it than probably what you are on the physical part of the machine, in my experience, because it's pretty well the same thing, I've just taken it all in, and I kind of go to my nature, what I've done for a living as a farmer, and it's pretty well the same thing. And you can always trade it in, get another one, they always have rebates sometimes, I don't know. John Deere International does all the time.
Greg, I'll just say that I, I'm thinking like Brad with the 20-year amortization, just like amortizing, you know, your home loan, you might get a 30-year loan, you can always pay it off early, all that kind of stuff. It gives us more flexibility to go with the 20-year. So if, if you'd like, I'll make a motion to approve at the 20-year amortization schedule financing or detail, I don't know how to word it.
The recommendation that they...
Well, the resolution in front of you would have to be modified then, which I don't think is an issue.
I don't want to do that, I don't want those trouble, so tell me how to...
Well, the resolution is your speaking point, and the resolution right now says that the bonds shall have a final maturity date no later than 20 years after the date of issuance. So if you're wanting to restrict it to the 20-year amortization schedule, you can do that, we would just need to modify the resolution, and we can do that after the fact. Brad, any issue with that?
You just changed to say that not less than.
Exactly.
What do you want to do?
And if later on you pay it off early, or you want to refinance or do something at a lower rate, then you'd need a new resolution at that time?
If you refinance, but if you pay it off, then no, I don't see any new resolution.
Pay it off, that's redemption, that's not a requirement.
Okay.
But if you want to refinance or use up on it, you can go back there just like...
Okay, so it's okay to put the 20-year in, and then after the fact, it can be struck and re, it can be changed without affecting us having to go through this again?
What do you, I'm sorry, changed?
The 20-year, you know, it says up to 20.
He's gonna change it right now.
Well, I don't want you to approve the way it's written now, if this is the motion. If the motion is that it shall be no less than 20 years, then I'd rather have that in front of you, and then we'll make it nice and pretty for you to sign the actual copy.
It's basically, it's basically no less than 20 years unless it's paid off.
Right, yeah, and, and yes, that's correct.
Yeah, that's not something that we need to explain.
We don't, we don't need to write that part.
I also trust the commissioners and the board, and they're here listening.
Just say that.
Okay.
What's that?
Just say what he just said.
Well, it's what I just said, or what he just said?
Well, I was gonna say no less than 20 years, and we don't, we don't have...
Change that up to 20 years to no less than 20 years.
That's, that's an option.
Is that your motion?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution up to 20 years for the financing.
No less.
No less than, I'm sorry. No less than 20 years for the financing.
I'll second.
Motion by Chris, and second by Rob. Any more discussion? All those in favor? It's five of us, and opposed, two, five, two, and that'd be Rick Reed and Ted Mitsker. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So one, one other question, why don't we flip and switch? What's your project, what's your projected time before we can turn this sucker going?
Sir, we still have to build the process of the...
Ah, just give me, just give me a number, come on. Two years? 18 months?
Next stage.
Okay, that's better than nothing. You gotta give me something.
All right. It's, yeah. Next up, Ben, we have tax abatement compliance. We have several of them on here, we'll start with 3A, Sehols.
Good evening, Steve Rowley, Economic Development. This is our annual compliance meeting for all of our active abatements, to see if they are in compliance based on the terms that they were granted abatement. I sent you guys all summaries, so I'm not gonna go through or read any of those, you've seen several of these for several years. Spoiler alert, everybody is deemed by Economic Development to be in compliance, to be employing who they said they were gonna employ, paying the wages they were going to pay, and building and investing what they were going to invest. Starting with Sehols, this is a 10-year abatement, this is year nine, you guys have heard it before, specialty engineering firm, they built the facility, they are above their projected employment, they have an average salary of $86,000 a year, and do some really cool stuff out of that building that has been in space in the Olympics and stuff like that, they are in compliance as far as we deem.
Okay, we need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
Hold on, are we, motion on, on just 3A?
Did you read more than...
No, he just read...
I just did Sehols, I knew him all the...
If you certainly, since they're all in compliance, if you want a motion, 3A to 3G, you certainly can do that.
Okay, that's my, that's my issue, I can't do 3A with the rest. If we do 3A by itself, then the rest, I'm fine.
Let's take 3A by itself.
Okay.
Okay, 3A is so moved.
Second, second by Brad. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six oppose.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Six, zero, and the abstention, Ted.
So moved from 3B to 3H.
3B to 3H.
3G.
3G.
Nice try.
Okay.
Sneaking that in.
Anyway, I got one thing over there.
I'll second to 3G.
Motion by Rick, and second by Ron. And I'll take a vote on that now, all those in favor? It's all seven of us, seven, zero.
Thank you.
I have one other quick thing on signing this resolution. Many of our papers, some of them will have a aye and nay, but you are recorded as a nay in the official minutes, and that's the vote. You're signing this basically just to say that this came before us, that you voted, but it doesn't tell you how you vote. Now, we're ready for 3H equipment.
Steve Rowley again, this is a request for funding to replace our six-year-old Economic Development 2017 Dodge Durango. It has 73,000 miles, I sent you guys a summary of this as well, along with photos of our vehicle with a Chevy, with, replacing it with a Chevy Tahoe. This has been done successfully before, where our department upgrades its vehicle, and that current vehicle is handed down to another department. In 2013, we had a 2013 Dodge that in 2017 was transferred to the highway department for use, saving them having to go out and get another vehicle. These funds are coming out of Edit, Economic Development Income Taxes. We have those funds, this is not a request out of Rainy Day, or out of General, I've heard it discussed here in council before, that that is possibly a good way for other departments not to have to ask for funding out of those accounts, when we have a vehicle before it's completely broken down, to be able to hand that vehicle down. We've had some time, so share receivers has worked really hard, and we've had the time to find a vehicle that will fit, give us a government or fleet discount. I've also talked to the sheriff and to his contact with some of those vehicles and what is available. We have the funds available, those that have been on our board, Rick and Greg and Ron, know that we forecast five years out, we don't look in the past, we forecast for the future. That's really it, our vehicle is not heavily used, but it has to multitask. It's kind of part pickup truck, when we do groundbreaking ribbon cuttings and events, load it up with equipment, podium speakers, gold shovels, all of those things. It is a tour van, as we do windshield tours and site visits, often from people who it's their first time in Warwick County, as we do a lot of work with the private corporate sector. It's a daily driver, taking us around the county to meetings, around the region to meetings, and sometimes up at the state meeting up in Indianapolis, and it certainly is kind of, does serve occasionally as that red carpet or welcome wagon as we introduce Warwick County to people to invest and to build and to employ here in our community. And I'm happy to take any questions.
What year did you say it was? The Tahoe, what year did you say?
It's 2023.
Twenty, I meant, okay, what was the one year?
2017.
Seven, that's what I...
Six years old.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ron, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. Discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, and opposed, two, Brad and Ron.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Circuit Court Business to Pay for Jury Trials. That's a per, per diem petit jury, $5,000 additional appropriation.
Good evening, Judge Granger from Circuit Court, got a little worried, thought item number four was gonna be here, pretty short time, and then didn't know three went for the entire alphabet, but...
Well, I was gonna say, it's the only but a goodie is returned. Cliff, where are your jokes?
I got nothing. I just hear quietly.
You gotta work it with us.
Yes, no respect.
I mean, you know, he's gotta like follow.
I had three long jury trials, April through May, one was the two-week trial, and these are fees for jurors, that's why I expended the budget so quickly.
You couldn't have wrapped it up any quicker or anything?
No, attorneys talk too long.
Yeah, that's right. Clifton.
Yeah, I do agree, I just didn't want it on this thing, but here we are.
The good news is that these occurred before July 1st, because as of July 1st, jury fees doubled, that's right.
Oh, wow. So nice of you.
Better plan your budget then.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brad, and second by Rick. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was it, I mean, dang, I wonder who put you on the agenda like that?
I was gonna say...
You kind of Judge Wyberg, this is her first time.
I forgot to read the amount of the truck a while ago, it was for $70,000. Yeah, 3H, additional appropriation, Economic Development was $70,000. Okay, Superior Court, one business, additional appropriation is to pay for mandatory court-ordered evaluation for paper document copies, $10,000.
Yes, I'm Krista Wyberg, I am the new judge in Superior Court One. I think this is the first time that I'm appearing before all of you, so thank you for having me. I am asking for the $10,000 to be appropriated. We have evaluations that are required that, to be done by statute, if there's somebody that comes in, their, their defense attorney thinks that they are possibly incompetent to stand trial, then I have to have them evaluated by two doctors, either two psychiatrists or, two psychiatrists or psych, what's the other one? Psychologists, yes, thank you. And it's expensive. We've already had to evaluate three defendants so far, so we've already been through, I believe, a little over $10,000, and we're halfway through the year, so we're just hoping to get this money to get us through the rest of the year.
Cubs or Cardinals fan?
Ooh, I don't know if I should say.
Well, he was already up here.
I know.
We did, we did go ahead and allow his, so we better know.
The Reds are pretty hot right now, by the way.
Yeah, I, no comment.
Oh, come on.
Okay, basketball thing?
IU.
Yeah, okay.
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. Discussion? All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you.
Question afterwards, have you been able to get the doctors and the psychologists to do your evaluations?
They're very, yes, they're very hard to find, there are several throughout the state, but we have one locally that's willing to do it, and then we use one that's close to, close to Indianapolis, that will come down and do them for us, so...
Because I was in the State House when the law, when I did the law.
Yeah.
And, because we couldn't find any doctors.
It is, it is tough.
Now, we've got psychologists, so...
Yes.
So that has made it easier.
It has made it easier, yes.
That's what I wanted to be sure of.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Make sure you're for the budget hearing, it's just more fun.
Oh, I know, I'm more to it.
Just ask Judge Granger.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next up is six sheriff's business, additional appropriation motorized equipment. Due to the shortage of vehicles not available last year, the amount in '22 wasn't spent, so was requesting to reappropriate it.
I think we should just put it back.
Sheriff Wilder.
Sheriff Wilder, yeah, you pretty well explained it, I mean, it's just money we weren't able to use because of the car shortages last year, those cars have all came in, we've used this year's budget and stuff, so it's worth trying to get back on track.
Did you get the right colors?
We got a few black ones, I don't know if you've seen, but most of them are all white, we kind of took what we could get.
Yeah, we put a black one out in front of the house, and I took one.
Yeah, they actually look pretty good, we just kind of like to keep the fleet the same.
I had several in front of my house the other day. I mean, drive by my house.
Oh, she did that in real quick.
Brad, I'm not an IU fan, but I will be for the night, for the Cardinals fan, the Cubs.
We know what kind of fan you are.
Motion by Ted, second by Rick.
Yeah.
Yeah. Who did the motion? Ted?
Ted.
Second by Rick, all in favor?
Thank you.
Seven, zero.
You just didn't have those, if you didn't have those cameras by your house.
Now, I've got a bunch of them to read.
Yeah, but I would like to address 7A real quick. I have a slight typo where it says transfer $78,751.01, that was actually the total dollar amount that was deposited. The transfer amount is $56,333.46.
Which one are you on?
7A.
$56,000?
Uh-huh, $333.46.
And it should not be in $78,000.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna read these, 7A, just for the record. Handbook policy reimbursement transfers or corrections, all items listed have been checked for accuracy and can be voted on under one motion. Transfer $56,333.46 from 2001 cash surplus to 2002 cash surplus. That's from adult probation circuit to adult probation superior, a correction. And 7B, transfer EMA equipment, $399, to office furniture, $399.99, same for the first one. 7C, additional appropriation and salary ordinance handbook policy. Health Department data manager retirement, $5,534, salary ordinance data manager retiree, 7D, additional appropriation reimbursement for recorder, postage, $490. 7E, additional appropriation reimbursement sheriff equipment maintenance, $914. reimbursement sheriff, equipment maintenance, $914. Transfer storm water, this is the fun first advantage audit, transfer from projects, $441, to workman's comp, $441. And 7G, EMA, public safety, replace emergency backup radios, transfer from supplies, $1800 to communication repair, $1800.
Motion to approve 7A through 7G.
A motion by Rick. Is there a second?
Rick, fix that, because you said G, it's F.
I see F G on the next page.
Next page, G.
There was. You don't have the amended agenda in front of you.
Rick, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. You thought I was, that one to you.
I mean, I've had Take Care of Rick for a while, so I was just easing the load down the.
Where's the punchline?
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven, zero. Okay. Now council business. The, Mr. Ledbetter has resigned from the alcoholic beverage board because he's moved, from what I understand.
Yes.
Out of county. And so we have two names so far. Tim Mosby, who's been on the board before, former council member and commissioner, and.
Ed Anderson.
Ed Anderson, yeah. Anybody else have any names?
I'd like to make a motion to table this because it's not been here long enough. Someone just found out about this. And I did talk to Mr. Ledbetter two days ago, and I just found out, you know, that he had resigned and why. So, and then so I really feel we need to take a little bit more time to think about it and get other names, possible, possibilities.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
No, I'll second that because, yeah, I agree with what I only became aware of it a couple of days ago.
Okay, motion by Ron, and second by Chris. There's really no discussion of a table. All those in favor of tabling? One, two, three, four, opposed. One, two, three, okay. Four, three, Rob, Rick, and Ted.
Ron, I don't think your motion said when you want to table this until?
Till the next meeting. I'm sorry.
It doesn't have, it doesn't have to state that, but just for Crystal's purposes.
Right. Give us time to look into it.
Okay. In other business, I have some announcements. The Farm Bureau Legislative Update is at 6:00 PM, social hour, 6:30 dinner, Baker Chapel, July the 13th. And 7 o'clock, reports of all the office holders and legislators that attend a general discussion with our farmers in the area. And also, September 25 to 28 is the Association of Indiana Counties' Annual Meeting. This year, it's close. I like them when they're close. A long time ago, I didn't like them because I thought it was more of a party than learning. But each year, they've added a lot of workshops, and plus, our county council has a meeting at this meeting, our County Council Association also. We get to talk to other councilmen, and it's a regular formal meeting of our County Council Association. So I just, registration opened up today. It's at the Frenchlick Hotels up there, the, the main hotel, Frenchlick Resort in Frenchlick. They also have other hotels, West Baden, and there's another one, that casino hotel there. So anyway, it's opened up registration today at September 25, 26, 27, 28. Basically, if you reserve a hotel, you want to go up Sunday night because it starts early, Monday morning, the 25th, ends about noon on the 28th on Thursday. Sorry. So just a couple of reminders. It'd be interesting for you if you want to do that. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Budget meeting? Oh, yeah. Thank you. We have our next budget session scheduled for July the 12th, 8:00 AM. And I'll get doughnuts, so we don't have duplicates. And then the next regular scheduled meeting's August 3, 2023. Anybody else have something for the good of the order? I haven't signed.
I want a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, and second by Ted. All those in favor? Seven, zero.
Run off before you sign the appropriation form.
Seven, 12.